At this time, I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? Who operate under that agenda? The first item then would be consider the approval of the work session and the regular meeting minutes from October 10th. The council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections?
Move approval.
Second motion by Craig, seconded by Steve to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We will move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the items that are on the consent agenda. We'll bring those up on the screen. And they include consider the approval of a raffle permit for shades of the past, consider the approval of temporary liquor license for the city of Marshall Employee Recognition Event, consider a resolution to allow Lyon County to retain voter account funds received in 2023, consider the approval for out-of-state travel for members of the chemical assessment team, consider or the adopt adoption of the amendment to the West Central Fire Department Association Mutual Aid Agreement, the introduction of the ordinance on the procedures and amendments, introduction of the ordinance pertaining to landscaping, grass and weeds on private property, introduction of the ordinance related to outdoor outside storage, specifically shipping containers, consider the approval of a land lease and development agreement, consider the South Whitney Street Reconstruction Project, East College Drive to Jean Avenue, consider the resolution ordering the preparation of the report on the improvement, and finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
Move approval as it presented. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Which brings us then to agenda item number 13 is the City of Marshall and the Marshall Municipal Utilities Partnership Agreement. With us tonight is Dave Shelkov, representing the Marshall Municipal Utilities. The leading up to this are, we have a partnership agreement that addresses a number of things that Marshall Municipal Utilities and the City of Marshall work together that we partner on. We, this agreement comes to the council and will also then be presented to the Utilities Commission and is really the product of a joint committee represented from the city side by myself as well as John Elkhorn as the liaison to the Utilities Commission along with two members of the Utilities Commission and then staff that worked on this agreement. So that that will be presented tonight by Dave. Dave, welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor Burns and council members. Thank you for taking the time and having me attend your meeting this evening. You just said everything I was going to say. Well, so, but really, that's fine. I appreciate that. So on September 28th of this year, 2023, we met as a committee and it representatives, as you said, Mr. Mayor, representatives of the city and of MMU. And we went over this document, discussed it at length, and decided to recommend to the city council the amended document before you. So what I would like to do unless there is some, and please stop me and ask questions if you have anything. But what I'd like to do is go through the first couple of pages of this document. And if you could go to page three or two, I should say, one more. There we go. Can everybody see that? And basically, this is the pilot calculations. When I came to work for MMU, that first year was the first year that we changed the formula for this particular pilot calculation. It is a 10-year rolling average of MMU's total sales. And this pilot calculation then is put into a formula. And in the 2024 base pilot will be eight $787,988. That'll be transferred from MMU to the city. And then an additional $176,616,000 will be transferred to the city and given to the EDA. So, and that totals $964,614. And if you go to the next page, the rest of the financial agreements within this document before you is lined out here and we can go through them very quickly. We just talked about the base pilot and the EDA support. The next on the list is the streetlight costs. This agreement is a 50/50 cost share between the city and MMU, which is a $277,000 adder on the MMU side. Fire protection costs, this particular agreement, and if anybody has any questions, we can drill down into that portion of the agreement and look at it a little bit closer. That agreement is $145,000 to the city and the rest, the balance of that cost then goes to MMU. And this year or next year, it's projected to be $260,319. Wastewater billing cost allocations, that's again, a formulated agreement between the city and MMU. As you know, MMU does, has to bill all of our customers for electric and water. It just makes sense that the city then works and uses the same apparatus that we use to bill for sewer and street, storm sewer, for this, on behalf of the city. And so those two agreements right there, and those are the annual dollar numbers that we basically apply towards that cost from MMU for on behalf of the city. And then you look at the total discounted services of $658,007, giving a total amount of allocated cost discounts and pilot number of 1.622, $1,622,000. And that's about 4.39% of the electric revenue. Are there any questions here? Again, we can, we can drill down if you need to, but I think it's pretty straightforward. And the red line, the red line document that you have shows all the changes. So there's no question of if there's anything that you can't find.
Dave, maybe two things to emphasize that you want to emphasize. One would be the calculation of the pilot payment is based on the, on the kilowatt hours of electricity that's sold. And that's been going up. And that's significant because that shows growth in the community at the same time that there's been a significant investment in energy savings. For example, the streetlights and the incentives to reduce some, especially consumer uses of electricity. But we still have growth in the community. So, and then the second point you may want to emphasize is that, you know, the bottom line as far as the percent that is contributed by MMU as an electrical utility and water utility to the city is really on par with what a private enterprise would, a privately owned utility would contribute in, in those communities that are served by private utilities.
Very good. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions so far? And then we'll go to the two major changes I wanted to talk about here tonight in the agreement. Really, there's only one major change, and there's another project I want to basically brief the council on that MMU is working on.
So Dave, I do have one question. When you look historically at the wastewater billing, in 2022, it was almost $100,000. In 2021, it was $92,000. This year, it's projected to be 90,000 and then estimated next year is 93. So why that big dip between 2022 and 2023? And
Where are you looking at?
If you look on the wastewater.
Oh, yes. So you're looking at 97,000 for 2022?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. A lot of different things that has happened between 2022 and 2024 or 2023. Some of those things are, if you, if we can drill down, we could probably look at it line by line. So you could see where the differences are. But typically, it's the efficiencies that we've gained through automation. So I don't know if you know this or not, but I'm going to tell you anyway. So in about 2018, we entered into a contract, MMU did, to install an AMI, an Automatic Metering Infrastructure System into our, our, into our electrical and water transportation and delivery systems. That AMI system then automated a lot of things. And in 2022, we were finishing up some automation there. There's some, also some increases in, some changes in our billing structure. We use a company called Itron, or not Itron, that's our metering system. But it is ENCODE, and it's Tyler Tech is the name of the company. And ENCODE is the, what we call our customer information system. So all those things together added to those decreases.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's a good question. Nice catch. We also, if I might add, we also did a rate study in 2022 that would reflect some of those changes as well. Again, we use our rate study, we do a three-year rate study for our, for our customers, the citizens of Marshall. In that rate study, we take all those numbers that are generated from that rate study, i.e. estimated costs, depreciation, cost of equipment, all of those things go into that, and that goes into that number as well. And that's carried on for the next three years. There are some changes to that, as you can see, but there are base numbers that are, that are created during our rate study. I know. There it is. Good questions. Anything else? So the next thing I want to talk a little bit about is looking at, if you could go to 10, agreement number 10A, real quick. There should be a bookmark on the side of that, unless you don't have that. Okay. So let's go to 10A really quick. So this is the major change between last year, or I should say 2023's agreement and 2024's. And this has to do with the chloride, chloride reduction coordination between the city and MMU. A little background there, I see some new faces here. About when, it started over 10 years ago to have a discussion on softening the water here at Marshall. The state of Minnesota has mandated to the wastewater, wastewater treatment plant to reduce their, their chloride, the amount of chloride they're discharging into the river. And a lot of discussions, the city and MMU entered into an agreement, and this is the result of that agreement, the verbiage here. And I believe it was in 2020, we started the project of retrofitting our existing water treatment plant with nearly a $12 million retrofit to allow for further treating our water and making it softer for our customers. And we've talked about this, maybe some of you haven't, but we've talked about this quite a bit. Personally, I'm using about 40 to 60 pounds of salt a year now, whereas it was three to four times that before. And that is because the water now I'm receiving from the new water treatment plant is, is probably five times softer than it was previous. So you don't need as much salt to treat your water for softness. And that's the whole purpose of that, that project. The city and MMU shared those costs about 50/50. We got about a $7 million grant from the state. And so it became a very affordable thing that we could do on behalf of our customers and our citizens here in Marshall. So that was a big part of this agreement. And then also another part is educating and working with the city and moving forward with getting people to change their softeners here in Marshall. You'll see that all of these requirements, all of these agreements between us have basically been fulfilled. And we believe, and so does the committee, that we no longer need to have this agreement in, in the partnership agreement. So we're, we're going to be removing that from the document before you. Any questions about that? Comments? So that's the big change. And if you could go back up to MMU Capital Funding Plan 7A, could you do that really quick? I wanted to talk really quick about this. It's a big deal for us. So as you know, we provide power for the city of Marshall and all of our customers here. And we have a very large, we call it a turbine generator. It's basically a jet on the ground and it turns a big old generator and makes, and these numbers aren't important, but it is something so that you can see the size of it. It's about 15 megawatts of power this generator does. Now, this generator was built in 1968. It was installed in Marshall in 1969. The turbine right now is 54, 53 to 54 years old. These things typically last 40 to 45 years. Now, the reason why ours has lasted this long is because we don't use it a whole bunch. And so it does have some age to it, but it doesn't have a lot of hours of operation. However, it's time to take a look at what we're going to do without it. What are we going to do when this thing finally breaks down? And how can we turn some lights on here in Marshall without it? So we're looking at a new generator project. It's about an 17 to 18 million dollar project. And we'll be coming to the council here in 2025. And we'll probably put it in the next agreement for 2025 and looking for 12 to 13 million dollars in bonding to, to build this new generation station. And we'll have a lot more information in the future for you. Right now, we're in the preliminary design stage and looking at trying to secure these new generators. These new generators are at least two years out. So we have to get them on order right away. The good, good news with that is we have then two years to build the, the building that they'll go in. But we need to have these installed. The other good news I want to report to you is, is that this, this is a huge project for MMU. And in the short time, we'll be spending this money. It's one of the largest ones we've ever had. But I want to tell you that we've, we've secured a way to fund this through our power supplier, MRES. It's a very exciting thing to have this kind of capital improvement without having, right now, zero inflationary pressures on our rate, which is pretty much unheard of. So we're excited about presenting that to our customers, presenting that to you, the city council, and then also to our utility commission to move forward. So that's the other big thing I wanted you to see and hear, that in the next year or so, we'll be coming and bringing more information to you about this, this large generation project here in Marshall. I would be remiss if you didn't see the, I call them grape farms, but they're called vineyards every other place. Do you see the vineyard going up by ADM? It looks like a vineyard, actually. It's going to be the vertical support structures for the new solar panels going in out there. And that project is ongoing. It's still scheduled to be online by the fall of 2024. So that's a big deal for us. And if I may, just take a little bit more of your time. This project is also going to have battery storage as part of its operational structure, which is a big deal to me. Because the sun doesn't always shine, right? And when it doesn't, we're still going to need power. So there's five megawatts of storage along with this solar. And it's going to make this particular generation source much more reliable for the city of Marshall. Pretty excited about that. So with that, then every other red thing that you see on the draft copy are the minor changes that we make every year. And there's really no other major changes except the number amount that's calculated for the pilot program and for EDA. Are there any other questions? Yes, sir.
So the solar panel project with the battery backup, that's got five megawatts of storage?
Yes, sir.
What is the new generation facility that you're looking at doing? How many megawatts is that going to be?
So right now, we're looking at a 12-megawatt. And this will be reciprocal generators. And again, they're, they're only for emergencies. So if something happens, we would like to turn on a portion of our community and get the lights on if something went dark. However, we also use these things as reserve capacity for our transmission and generation grid, which is controlled by MISO, and it's Mid-American Independent System Operator. They have a big chunk of the middle part of the United States, all the way from Canada down to New Orleans, and they're responsible for all the generation and transmission. So what we call this generation that we're building is called reserve capacity for them. So if they need it, they'll tell us, hey, turn on your reserve capacity generators to help them serve their load.
So just, and without getting into the weeds on this at all, but just kind of for curiosity for the general public, if we turn off the big users, the hospital, I believe, is on enough standby power, they can operate on their own in an emergency, number of the other facilities, just to have lights on and basic residential use, how many kilowatts do you think it takes to operate city of Marshall in an emergency?
That is a great question. So right now, we're probably looking at, right now, it'd probably be 12, but we would have to rotate that in an hourly basis.
So it'd be like rolling blackouts, rolling brownouts?
Well, it would be rolling blackouts, but you'd get your house warm.
Right. Or your refrigerator cooled, or your freezer cooled.
Yes. So to be clear, our intent is to operate both sets of generators simultaneously. So we'll have the 15-megawatt jet turbine, and then also this 12-megawatt generators, gen set. So totally, we'll have 27 megawatts, which would probably take care of all of our residential area.
And then Dave, and the kind of the gist of, of, you know, comfort for people is that that gen set, the 12-megawatt that you're talking about, that's multiple units as kind of a generation battery. So if one fails, it's just one small part of it. There's, there's multiple duplicate pieces.
Very, very astute of you, council member. So yes, the answer is three, or it's going to be four 3-megawatt generators.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Your, your history, though, on reliability is that we have not needed that backup because you have, well, several years of 100% reliability.
Well, it's, I'm glad you said that, Mr. Mayor, because yes, that's correct.
Yeah. I just want to talk a little bit more about the bonding potential. Charter specifies city council gives approval to MMU for bonding. So some of that discussion, you know, and I don't know if we have a work session with Michaela. We know that there's revenue sources for it, but we have other bonding and how that may kind of tie in with it. And I know that I think you're working with Baker Tilly, too.
Yes, for the bonding side.
That might be some future discussion that we'll want to have because it ultimately comes back to city council to decide whether or not to issue the bond.
Yeah. I did not mean to bring that up to, to concern you right now because we will have a full year, over a year with which to discuss our next steps, how that it's integrated into the city's bonding plan, and how we can work together to make that as seamless as possible. But I, I felt that it was important that the council understood that in 2025, we will be asking for bonding.
Other questions?
It's great.
Thank you, Dave. The, if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion from the council to approve this partnership agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to approve the, all the components of the partnership agreement. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll move then to agenda item number 14, consider the 2024 health and dental insurance renewals. Presenting this agenda item will be Sheila Dubs, Human Resource Director for the city. Sheila.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This afternoon, I'd like to welcome Bill Chakuski, our broker for health and dental insurances. Since we reviewed the claims data and the renewal information in great detail at the work session on October 10th, I've asked Bill to do more of a high-level overview of the information in your background materials. For both insurances, our existing agreements will expire on January 1st. When his part of the presentation is over, is finished, I will come back and review more information in your packets about our comparable cities and then the staff proposal that's on the final page. Before I asked Bill to come up, I just wanted to review the first page, if you could turn it to the first page of the pocket, Stephen. I wanted to provide you just with a history. This was also presented at the work session. But I think this first page showing a recent history of all of the renewal rates for both health and dental are a good starting point. Last year, Bill was able to negotiate our health insurance rate down to an 8.8% increase. And for dental, we were in a two-year agreement for Delta Dental. So we had a rate guarantee on that second year. I'll have Bill delve deeper into our renewal numbers, but I just wanted you to have this background information to know where our starting points were with both of the insurance plans. And with that, I'll have Bill come up and then I will come back when he is finished.
Thank you, Sheila, and welcome, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you, Sheila. As Sheila said, we, we went through all this two weeks ago at the work session. So I'm just really going to do a high level. The first page, just a reminder, this is the current plan that we offer our employees. No changes to the plan. It's an 80%, or 75/25% co-insurance plan. So this just shows you what the in-network deductibles and out-of-pockets are, and then what the out-of-network would be. As Sheila mentioned, we, we did have a 7% increase in the premiums, which I felt was a very, very good renewal. When you look at the market today, cost trend in the medical industry is running 12 to 15%. And that's just the increased costs in medical care. So the 7%, I believe is a, is a good renewal. And I'm advising that we take that next year. Of course, we'll look at it again like, like we do every year. The change that we're proposing and then I'm recommending is in the dental. I did take the dental out for RFP, which means request for proposals. We've had a good relationship with Delta Dental for many years. But unfortunately, Delta Dental has changed. Most, if not all of our dentists in town no longer accept Delta Dental as their network. So, and this is not uncommon. We, most of our clients, we have taken out for RFPs. This page shows you the result of that RFP. We had two firms that, two providers that did DQ or declined to quote. The, the other ones are shown here. And if you'll just notice at the very top, our Delta Dental rates at 5304 for the employee, 14738 for the family. And then you can just browse down. The third one down, the Beam benefits, is the company that I'm recommending that we move to. You can see the rate difference between the Beam benefits and our current Delta Dental. And then we'll take a look at the next page, which shows a side-by-side comparison of those. The only difference, and it's a positive difference, other than the premiums. The premiums are lower. That's obviously the biggest benefit. The other benefit is when you look at the UCR, the, the usual and customary charges, currently it's at 90%. it's at 90%, and that's if, so basically what that means is, they look at all the dentists in the area, and they look at their charges for all those services, and then they pay at the 90 percentile of that average. Beam actually has a higher percentage of 95%. So other than a change in the card from Delta Dental to Beam, our employees should see nothing but a positive result of this change. So with that, is there any questions on that from anyone? If not, I'll go to the last page, and that's our recommendation. I'm recommending that we do accept the Blue Cross/Blue Shield rate increase of 7%. Sheila's going to go over the numbers with you in a bit. And then the Delta Dental, I'm recommending that we do, in fact, move January 1st to Beam Dental. And we will be talking to the employees about that next Tuesday at the Benefits Fair so that they have a clear understanding of what that means.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Questions? Okay, thank you. And we'll turn to Sheila.
So as Bill just reviewed this year, our health insurance renewal rate came in favorable, but our dental rate did not. I really appreciate him conducting our RFP process so that we could obtain better rates, and he was successful for us with the Beam proposal providing the lowest cost. We do experience very good participation from our employees on our dental benefit, and the participation numbers show that this is an important benefit to our employees and their families. Towards the end of your packets, on Page 177 and 178, there are two tables with our comparable information. These are the same cities that we use in union negotiations. We gathered the premium and cost share information from each comparable city on both medical and dental insurance for both single and family plans. And these two tables show the total premiums for medical and dental insurances and the cost share between the employee and the employer. And then the final column under the yellow coloring shows the total amount contributed by the employer to both insurances. So for both the single and the family plans, you can see that Marshall is positioned in the lower half of our comparables. On the last page of your packets is a proposal for your consideration. This proposal was reviewed by the council during the work session about two weeks ago. I've shown our current plans in the white boxes and then the recommended proposals in the blue-shaded boxes. For the health insurance, as Bill mentioned, we are recommending the proposal to accept the Blue Cross and Blue Shield renewal and that the employer and the employees share equally in the premium increase. The employer and the employee each taking a 7% increase in premium contributions. Based on the current number of contracts, the annual increase to the city with that proposal is estimated at $90,664 across all funds. I'll move to the dental side of that next. As Bill indicated, the dental renewal was not favorable, so staff are recommending that council reject the Delta Dental renewal, which is shown in the peach-colored box, and then accept the Beam proposal. The Beam proposal has a guaranteed rate for the second year, so our rates would stay the same for 2025. The Beam proposal requires an 80% cost share from the employer, which is the same cost share that the employer and employee share today. With this proposal, the employer and the employee would both realize a cost savings. The employer, the city's side of that cost savings, would be approximately $17,392 over our current rates. The last set of boxes shows the combined totals. If you were to review the two previous slides, in light with that, you would see that our rankings would stay stable with this proposal against our comparables for 2023. If you want to scroll just to the bottom of the table, Stephen, we've shown the overall employee and employer percentage increases as a percentage when you combine both the health and the dental premiums. With this proposal, the employer increase is 3.77% for singles and 4.92% for families. The employee increase is similar, 3.30% for singles and 4.97% for families. Staff did meet with the Employee Insurance Advisory Committee earlier this month, on October 6, and they were supportive of this proposal as well. I think with that, I'll stop, and if you have any questions for either myself or Bill, we can answer those for you.
Okay, thank you, Sheila. Questions? Sheila and Bill, as well as the rest of the staff that's worked on this, thank you for your thoroughness in this analysis of the renewal options as well as your recommendations. So thank you. What are the wishes of the council?
I move we approve the recommended changes, the renewal to the health insurance and the rejection of the Delta Dental and the acquiring to go with Beam it is for dental insurance for the next period, the next contract period. I'd second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Now, discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 15, the Authorization to Purchase Playground Equipment from St. Croix Recreation. I'll ask President Stendrude from Community Services and Parks to present this agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm just here to ask for permission to order our next inclusive playground equipment. We finished up Legion Field two years ago and Independence Park six weeks ago, maybe two months ago. Both of these have been funded through solely donations that have bought the equipment, and then we put in what's called extreme grass or synthetic surfacing that has antimicrobial characteristics to it and a 15- to 20-year lifespan. We'd propose to use the same product. Our next park would be at Justice Park, and this equipment would be more sensory-based, I would call it. It's a music, kind of a music-themed, but it actually has screens that interact and stuff like that, too. So it's kind of the newest trend. They have a sale going on it now, and St. Croix Recreation is also the state contract holder for the equipment. And again, we have all this funds and donations to cover the purchase of this. So this 3D image wasn't in your packet. The rep just got to me at like 4:00 today, so it just kind of gives you a little bit of a look and feel of what it would be like. We can edit and alter the colors to anything we want. In that area, there would basically be like a 30-foot circle or about 900 square feet. So glad to take any questions. Otherwise, I'm just trying to avoid, usually January 1, you see the price increase on everything, so it's trying to avoid that. We'd order the equipment, store it over winter for install next year.
So thank you, Preston. Questions or comments or input for Preston?
I just have one quick question. So the, it's $5,000 discount below the state contract price?
Yep, yep, they have a sale rate going on on this equipment right now. I can't remember, maybe through November 1st or something. So we kind of utilize that and then get state contract discount after the sale price, so.
Any other questions?
Do we have a plan to finance it? I mean, we got donations for the other. Do we anticipate the same?
Yep, we have donations already. There's a couple businesses in town that have contributed quite a bit of funds, so.
Well, it's an important project, and, you know, thank you so much for the donors that recognize that also.
Yep, I'll bring that list in December to do like all of our donations to.
Perfect. Move to approve.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by Jim to approve the authorization to call for purchase. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 16, which is an informational item. It's an update on the Minnesota DNR Relief Grant Award notification.
All right. Preston? Yep, thanks again. Just want to give you a quick update. Late in the summer, early this fall, we found out that DNR was soliciting applications for grant funds for tree-related projects, I'll call, with an emphasis on Emerald Ash Bore. They have two grants available, the Relief Grant and the Shade Tree Grant. They were both, we applied for both. We haven't heard on the other one yet. That comes out in November. But we were informed last week that we did get selected to receive the grant in our full requested amount for $329,080. It's the first time we can get reimbursed for staff time, and we have like a three-year span of time to do it. So we'd incur expenses upfront, but every quarter, you can turn in reimbursements and then for the full amount over the course of three years. So we'll definitely further us in our fight against Emerald Ash Bore. And this will allow work on some private property, too, which we haven't had in the past, so. Oh, it's just information. There'll probably be more information coming once we have like a signed contract, so we're just wanted to inform you, and we're not supposed to do a lot of like PR or anything on it yet, so.
But that will be, that'll be coming, I'm sure. Property owners will have a lot of questions about how this is going to be managed, not only on city property, but also on boulevards and adjacent to private property, too.
Yep, yep, we'll handle all that. There's some criteria, but until we have the final grant wording, we just want to wait on how to implement that, so.
And there's a upcoming grant opportunity also?
Yep. The other one would be the shade trees, that you're referring to. Yep, we applied for that one, too. That one would be more emphasis on parks, again, kind of like we did two years ago. That would be removal of trees and planting of new ones also, just in public spaces. So this grant, the relief, also will reimburse for treatment of Emerald Ash Bore, where the shade tree will not. So they're kind of a little different in each category, so we kind of put together two projects. So we got one of one, so hopefully we get the second one also, so.
Any input for comments from the council?
Two pieces of the grant, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Pieces of the grant, too, as you mentioned, getting awareness out. We did include some money for publications and communications, and then also consultation. As we go through different phases of our environment, different tree selections, we may want to look at our EAB Ash, Emerald Ash Bore plan and see if it needs to be updated in some shape or form in terms of tree varieties. We know that there are new varieties that have been coming out as well in recent months, and maybe we want to look at that as well. So that's part of the grant.
And Craig, you had to come.
Just thank you for all the work, Preston, on pushing forward with this. We really appreciate it.
Anything else?
Thank you, Preston.
Yep, thank you.
We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 17, the Airport Snow Removal Equipment Building. Consider the Architectural and Engineering Services Agreement with TKDA for the bidding phase services. Jason Anderson, City Engineer, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. Included in the packet, you've got the scope of services provided by TKDA for your consideration. The amount is $39,170, and this contract will allow us to proceed with putting, pulling together the plans and specifications and preparing for a rebid of that project. We remember that we had a bid that was outside of our comfort level for cost last year, and we're going to, we're proposing to try again. So by getting this in place, we'll be positioned to start working with TKDA to pull together our different parties that we need input from, our airport commission, our contracting community, and start to make some amendments to the plans and attempt to rebid. You've got the proposed schedule in there as well in the memo. We want to be bidding ideally in December or early January and trying to get bids out as soon as possible. So staff would recommend to award this. And we did not run this through airport commission, but we did message them and let them know that this was coming. They're aware of this. They're invested in the plan as well.
Very good. Greg, any comments from the airport commission?
He nailed it. That was exactly right.
Questions?
I have a couple questions on this. They, this is that building they drew up once already, and it came in extremely expensive. I don't know if it was drawn up right. I'm not here to blame anybody. But with that being said, are they doing this for a little, a discount on this since they've done it once already? Or should we open this up to other engineers to bid since they did bid it out once and it did not work well?
Sure, that's a fair point and a fair question. Yes, I think that they are, they took some time to try to make sure they're competitive with their number. I do, I do believe it's competitive. There's lots of formulation issues as well. There's funding sources from FAA, state, local. They're trying to reevaluate and maximize that. Takes a lot of time and effort. I don't believe that going to a different architect at this point would be a wise financial decision, but we have had some communications with TKDA and their staff. We've met with quite a bit of their team to talk about expectations with this project and others going forward, and I think that they're prepared to deliver.
And you had a second question? Okay. Other questions for Jason?
Just maybe a kind of a comment, too, to put on top of what Jason's reply or, you know, response to Councilmember Luzinski's question. Those were the same issues that were brought up at the airport commission, and they got pretty strongly vetted. So, yeah, you're not the only one with those same concerns, and we feel pretty comfortable moving forward. The message was sent, and I think the message was received.
Other questions? If not, you have the recommendation for the agreement for, with TKDA for professional services for the bidding process.
I move approval of the authorization to move forward.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. The voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 18, Commission Board Liaison Reports. Craig?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Amanda?
I wasn't able to make the Public Housing Commission meeting. EDA is tomorrow. Planning Commission, we talked about those three ordinances that were in the consent agenda today, and I think issues were addressed or any questions were addressed in those updated items, so.
Do you want to mention the EDA bus tours on Friday?
EDA bus tours are on Friday, November, what is that, 3rd? There are several times to sign up for, so it's a really cool, I mean, I got to do the council tour, but I assume it's going to be something kind of like that and get to go.
Good, very good.
I'll see what you say.
Anything else? Otherwise, the, from my standpoint, the Fire Relief Association Board of Trustees met early this morning. In the last quarter, the return on the fund was of roughly 4.5%. So that was positive because, you know, last year, with all retirement funds, it was a down year. So it's on the rebound. The other point with the Fire Relief Association is that the, you know, they've had some, I'll call them, long-term fire member retirements recently. And in fact, in probably the last five years, perhaps 18 to maybe 20 fire, volunteer firemen have retired, and when that happens, then they're paid out with their fund. So the total fund has been drawn down, but it's still adequate to cover the needs of the remaining members as well as the new members that are coming on. So the fund is healthy, but there has been some major payouts that have happened this year. So we're talking members that have been on for, you know, 20-plus years and that have served, in some cases, much longer than that. John? And then one other thing, Southwest Regional Development Commission, later this week, on Thursday and Friday, they have a two-day board retreat to focus on strategic planning. John?
Nothing.
See?
For Visitors Convention Bureau, they had over 2,500 people attend Prairie Jam. And then they had a little update from the hotel partners, which will be right by the Red Baron there. They're still trying to secure some funding, but the estimated grand opening is winter, spring of 2025, but they're still trying to secure funding. So who knows where that's at, but that's their plan, so that's all I have.
Jim? Jim?
I have nothing.
We'll move then to Councilmember Individual Items. Jim, we'll start on your end.
The only item I have to bring up, since they brought snow into the forecast, we have a council meeting on December 26th scheduled, and I know it's, I like to plan. I think as a council, we should think about, are we going to have one on the 26th, or should that be moved to the 19th? It's just something I think to help the staff out, to know what's going on the 26th and help us out, because a lot of people will be gone that day.
Right.
So that's one I want to throw out there, that's something that should be considered, maybe address at the next meeting, so staff can plan properly for the future.
I think that's a reasonable plan, and we can come back and make that formal action.
Other than that, I did not mean to say snow. I apologize, but it is in the weather forecast.
It is a four-letter word.
It is.
See?
I have nothing.
John?
Craig? Just real quick, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but the Third and Lyon Street project is complete, and I think it looks pretty darn good. And I just want to, hats off to all the city staff and our engineering department especially, but also to the Downtown Business Association, who, you know, for two and a half years, we met to bring the best plan we could forward, and I think it looks great. I just really appreciate staff time. I know Preston's team has been involved in that. So it was a big effort, a lot of people, but I think it paid off. It looks great, and I think our contractors, from what I can see, did a really, really good job. So I just think it looks good and another good kind of piece of Marshall and showing our dedication to the downtown along with everything else in the community. I think it just makes Marshall a better community, more attractive, and hopefully it keeps a vibrant attitude and energy in the downtown. That's it.
Thank you. Steve?
The only thing I want to bring up is a safety-related issue. On my way to work for this past two weeks, I drive between C Street and 59 Main Street. That light, I have seen more cars and semis go in full speed, blow through red lights than you'd care to know, and that's just an accident waiting to happen. And that's right during the morning time when kids are crossing there. So I think we need to, and I talked to the Sheriff's Department already, put up a little monitoring station there and maybe do some enforcement there, because I will tell you, there are cars that that light is blatantly yellow and the semi will go boom right through, and it's not yellow anymore. It's pretty pink, so.
Sharon, you'll pass that on, public safety.
I will.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Amanda?
I was on a walk last night through Independence Park, and there was a group of people there picking up garbage, which I thought was really cool. So I don't know if they adopted the park or who that might have been, but they did a good job, and I thanked them for it there, too. But thank you, everybody who takes care of our parks.
Thank you, Amanda. And the, I'll just make one comment building on Craig's comment, and also commending our Engineering and Street Department in that we do have our major projects completed. That included Third and Lyon Street, included Channel Parkway, included the parking lot by the river, included the picnic pavilion, the amateur sports ball field. I'm probably forgetting some. And they're all largely complete. And when you mentioned weather changing, you know, I've been in other communities in the past week where they still have projects opened up. They're still working on the infrastructure, and they don't have the asphalt down. And of course, that's a huge concern for those communities, because are they going to have the weather that they'll be able to complete the projects? We don't have that problem because of the good planning that our engineering department did. I think you had completion dates about the middle of October, because we all know that we've had a nice fall, but the weather always changes, so. So thank you and commending our Engineering and Public Works Department. With that, I'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
Charter Commission did meet last week and reviewed some recommended language changes from the city attorney. And the Charter Commission wanted a little bit of time to review them, so they'll probably meet again. And it will eventually come forward to City Council for consideration as well. In addition, Legislative and Ordinance meets next Tuesday, the 31st, to have some discussion once again on cannabis. We kind of waited to figure out additional information on the topic, and it should be a good discussion on the 31st. Community Services Advisory Board's also going to meet early next week. They had previously in the beginning of the month talked about cannabis use in public places, more specifically to parks, since that's their advice capacity for what they serve. And we'll probably come back to that again and see if they want to provide a recommendation to LNO and to the City Council or stay silent and just refer it to the appropriate committee. So those are a couple of things that are coming up. Preston and I had an interview today with Deb Gao, Marshall Independent, and lots of really good questions. You know, why are we locating the Aquatic Center where it is? Kind of going back a little bit in some of that history and some funding questions as well. And we went back actually to some old minutes. I know Stephen Anderson helped us, looked at past action of council. And it's been a struggle for a long time, this Aquatic Center. And you can go back to 1968, there was a referendum vote. It did not pass. That would have provided some enhancements. We know that the bathhouse was constructed in 1970. They found a way to get some revenue through bonding to make that happen. And then more recent in the 80s and in 2008. A lot of times when we looked at some of the history, there were split decisions among the council. And I always kind of say, if staff and the city can be really efficient, if we know we've got great support and really everybody moving in the same direction. And, you know, recently, we look at what City Council did, and 2022 is unanimous decision from those council members who sat on here in 2022 to put forth a request for this project and to the legislature. In 2023, it was also unanimous. So it really helps us kind of get momentum, even though we fully study and vet all the different topics, including funding and location and use and et cetera. So it was interesting to kind of look at that this afternoon and earlier. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Sharon. Jason?
I'll be very brief. I agree with the statements about the downtown project. I think it looks great. It's good to have that open and kind of relieve the burden from the downtown business community. The project you were looking for is the Legion Field Pond Project was another one that was done. Agree, though, the contractors did a great job. It feels good to be done early, but I've got nothing else to report.
Any questions for Jason? If not, is the city attorney, yes, Pam?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I think Sharon covered a lot of it. I do want to give a quick update to council that we are, I believe, in our last rental committee meeting. We've made it all the way through with all the changes, and I made the final changes, and the next meeting is just a final review.
Very good. Any questions for Pam?
I think that's Halloween, isn't it? Are we going to trick or treat that day?
It is Halloween, the meeting is on, yes. Along with LNO.
It'll be done well before trick or treating time.
I won't be in costume either.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on then to the remaining items that are on the agenda this evening. They include the information items on our cash and investments, our listing of building permits, our listing of upcoming meetings. As for the council's review, is there any other item to come forward this evening at this meeting? If not, it would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Amanda. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by C to adjourn. Discussion? No discussion, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We are adjourned.